... districts are in terms of things to do. And with the idea of choice and where people can go to move, this doesn't make us as attractive as we can possibly be. Two or three years ago, I did a survey of all of our members. We have 280 teachers, basically. Over three-quarters of them responded to the survey. And we asked, how much do you spend of your own personal finances to support education? And on the low end, teachers aggregated, spend $50,000 of their own money. And on the high end, they spend $90,000 of their own money each year to support this budget. I know you gave me a look there, but that's how much people spend. Because what happens is, there are so many fixed costs in a budget from a school system, that the things that get cut are supplies and paper, pencils, lab equipment, lab consumables, that we, if we didn't provide, wouldn't be able to provide the education that we know that our students deserve. So those are some things that I think that get kind of lost in the haze of this. Because the first, and I understand when you do a budget freeze, when costs come up, but the things that get cut are those things that directly affect teaching and learning. So I just thought, as you've got your red pencils out, those are things that generally don't get brought up, but I thought that would be important for you to hear. Thank you.
Could you just repeat the number? I'm sorry. Maybe that's why my face was a little funny. Did you say 90? You didn't say 90,000.
Yes, 9-0,000. 90,000, 50 to 90.
A year?
Yes, per year.
Per teacher?
No, 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 no. Teachers in aggregate.
I was going to say, man, we're paying.
Teachers in aggregate. Oh, gosh. We don't make that much money. No, in aggregate, that's how much we spend.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, delegations. Anybody else that would like to come and speak to the board? Heard anything on the agenda tonight? Delegations, delegations. Hearing none, I will close delegations and go on to new business. New business will be budget reviews, and tonight's budget will be Board of Education. And soon.
Good evening. I'm Tim Hagan. I'm this year's chair of the Board of Ed. And I'd like to thank you all for allowing us to come and present our budget thoughts for this year. In the audience, let's see if I've got the board. There are some board members. I see Lee Gianakis is here, John Kleinhands, Barbara Sengas, Ryan Schrader, Bill Derry, and Candace Carlson back. Is that good, everybody? And I'm sure Jeff will introduce the administrative team that's here as well. So I think this, well, first of all, Mr. Newton, our superintendent, began the budget process almost back, well, really, I think he started, he started working on it in September. And the administrative team worked on things in October, leading us into beginning our deliberations, or our inputs, in November. So it seems like the budget process has gone on for quite a while. So I actually had to go back and review everything today, just to make sure I had the stuff in my head. Along the way, we had several of the Board of Finance members engage, which was fantastic. And the engagement was so good, because it was basically allowed us to get even clearer on what we were talking about, okay? Not that the amounts of money and all that stuff were right or wrong, but in terms of us articulating to you folks, and to the community as well, exactly what we were asking for, and why certain costs were going up, and why certain costs were going down. So I really do, I really appreciated the input we got through the process from the Board of Ed members that were able to participate. It was truly invaluable. So with that, I think I'll just, I'm not going to steal any of Jeff's thunder, or details on the budget. So with that, I'll turn it over to our superintendent, Mr. Newton.
Thanks, Dr. Hagan. Appreciate it. And I as well want to just thank everybody that was involved in this process this year. I think we have built a real solid team at our district level. And we have just some wonderful staff, wonderful administrators, and a wonderful Board of Ed. And we've all put a lot of heart and soul and dedication into this. And I want to thank all of you, and members of the Board of Finance that took part in some of that work this year. I want to thank the Board of Selectmen. I know they're not here tonight, but we presented to them. They gave us some feedback, and we appreciate that feedback. And we use some of your feedback from last year in some of the work that we did this year, as well, after the comments that you made this time last year. So with that, I'd just like to recognize some of the folks that are with us. I'm not going to point them out all individually, but our administrative staff, if all of them could just stand, our administrators. We've got our principals, and assistant principals, and some of our central office staff members are here with us. Dr. Hagan introduced our board members that are here. And Lynda Johansson, thank you for joining us as well. We appreciate it. And thanks to the public also for coming out. One last special thanks, Mariana Stevens, who's up here in front. Mariana has been with us now for less than two years, and has just done a phenomenal job as our finance director, and has really helped solidify and clarify the work that's going on across our budget. So I want to personally thank her with this complex process, and the diligent work that went into it. So with no further ado, we'll jump into some of the slides. You have them in front of you. So I just would like to start with our presentation purpose. And as always, we've started every presentation this year, as well as last year, on Slide 2, with the fact that our goal, our objective, is always to clearly articulate this budget process, the cost drivers, as well as understanding, you know, we have a fiscal responsibility to the town, and, you know, to all of our, all of our district staff members, and everything we do for kids and families. With that, we are also, through this process, we've been very mindful of the fact that we have three elementary schools that were approved, $37.5 million, to do some alterations to. That work is well underway, and there's a lot of time and a lot of vested interest that's gone into that. And the last piece, zero-based budgeting, again, this year, we built our budget from the ground up. It starts at the school level. They don't just roll over the numbers from the previous year. We're trying to look in closets. We're trying to understand what, where are the needs? And we build the budget at the school level first, for what the school needs, each school and each department. And we bring it forward to central office, and continue to build from there. So there's our purpose. I just want to highlight additionally, those renovation projects, as well as redistricting that is taking place. I've been here a couple times with some of our board members. We've talked about the budget, the budget for the projects. We've been on schedule. We've been on time, which is great. We hope that continues. And we're about 55% to 60%, almost 60% done with those three schools. With that comes redistricting. You know, two of the most complex things, I think, you know, you can do as a superintendent, as a Board of Ed, is to, you know, go through renovations, but also redistrict your elementary schools. Families become very attached to their schools. It's a very challenging thing to do. I give this Board of Ed credit for moving forward with redistricting. And we're ready to go for next year to balance out our three elementary schools. And with that balancing came a lot of reorganization, and some savings as well, which really helped us with this budget, this budget process. So we'll talk a little bit about that in just a bit, but it was an extremely challenging process, to say the least, but we are moving forward. Everything that we do revolves around our long-range plan goals. We are in year two of a five-year long-range plan. I'm on page four. Three main goals. And our first goal, focusing on, you know, decisions and systems operation, operations for student success. One of the biggest focus areas for us this year on that is technology. And we're going to talk about some woes that we've had with technology this year, and as moving into next year. And there's some costs associated with fixing some issues with that. So that's a heavy goal, as part of number one. Number two, you know, the collaborative culture and the collaborative process. You know, we're always trying to reach out and look for regional opportunities. And regionalism has been a big topic across the state of late. We're already doing a lot of that, and we continue to try and do that. We don't, I'll be honest, we don't need the state to come in and tell us, you know, to go regionalize with Town Sixo. We're trying to work on those efficiencies. We'll talk about some of those in just a minute. And then the last one, student-centered learning. A lot of focus on social and emotional growth and learning for students, mental health. Last year, you know, you helped us in supporting the addition of social workers across our schools. And then Nyanic Center, just some facts, where we've been able to support five additional families at that elementary school, seven additional families at Haynes. I mean, those might sound like small numbers, but we put them up there because they're making huge impacts. And that's just two schools. You know, we've got other data that's really showing some positive supports that are helping families out, and making that connection between home and school. So the social worker piece has been, has been very positive, and we've been very excited about that. Next slide, on Slide 5. Here's kind of the process that we went through. Dr. Hagan mentioned, you know, I started with Mariana, you know, back in September. And the schools were working diligently. They sent up all their information. We put it all together. We looked at the first number kind of out of the gate, and we said, okay, that's really high. But that was all in, 5.56% of an increase. We know that we're in a climate of, you know, not 5.5%, 5.56% increases. So we worked really hard. And next slide, I'll kind of show you a breakdown of this. We dropped, came to our first, our budget workshop, got into that process. We were then sitting at a 4.21. The Board of Education and members of that committee said, go sharpen your pencils some more. Hence, we are at a 3.18% increase. And there's real five core reasons for that, which we'll get into in a little bit. And if we didn't have those core increases, we'd potentially be sitting at a .75, which I'll show you later on. Next slide, a little bit of more of a breakdown, on Page 6, of how we got, you know, from the 5.56 down to the 3.18. And a couple more slides ahead, we'll break this down a little bit further. But, you know, around that first budget workshop, you know, time, we reduced two buses. We had some staff reductions due to redistricting. And we had some savings from teacher retirements, where we weren't replacing some positions after some folks had retired. And also, a $60,000 reduction in legal fees, which saved us about $647,000, almost $648,000, which brought us down to the 4.21. Again, we were told to sharpen our pencils and do some more work. We went back to the drawing board and said, okay, where are other areas? We kept looking. We kept digging. Factored in enrollments, and we'll talk about, we've got four slides for you on enrollment, which we'll show you in a bit. We reduced an additional four teaching positions, three paraprofessional positions, and a little bit in security hours, although we've got some increased security costs. Now, we were, at one point, we backed that off some, with the understanding that we could still meet our needs for safety and security in our buildings. Did a new copier contract, under the guidance of our Assistant Superintendent and Mariana Stevens. And some reductions in liability insurance, as well as, you know, then some further reductions in, you know, legal fees. Putting us at, you know, a 3.18% increase that the Board of Ed unanimously adopted, and we bring forward to you this evening. Just a little history on the next slide, of where we've been with approved, town-approved budgets. I feel as if, you know, we're falling in the range of, especially where the last couple of years have been. This is my fourth year in district now. We're sitting, you know, right around that, you know, that 3% range. And just to make a note, you know, 2019, this current fiscal year budget, you know, we're at a 3.01, as the town meeting back in October, you had done that additional appropriation, which supported us. And I'll thank you for that, and helping out our budget a little bit more. And, you know, the last four referendums that we've had across the town, I feel have been very, very positive, and overwhelmingly supportive. Our town has supported the overall town budget, which obviously includes the Board of Ed budget. So a lot of what I think you're very interested in is the fact that, you know, some of our savings history, and the work that we've done, and the ongoing work we continue to do. Let's take food service, for instance, our food service program. We're in year two of having our own food service, food service director, and our own program, where prior to that, it was a contracted service. We were really hemorrhaging money under a contracted service. Our operating budget was offsetting the cost of that program. You know, in year two, we're $36,000 to the black, which is fantastic. You know, we've increased participation at the school levels, and we're doing very well. So that has saved us, you know, if we look back, you know, the four years, 2014, 2018, you know, we, out of our operating budget, spent over three, right around $300,000. So we've offset that. And if we move forward, you know, there's obviously going to be additional, no need to spend money out of that operating budget. Some curriculum software and professional development consolidation, under the direction of Amy Dron, our Assistant Superintendent. She has pulled programs, pulled professional development up to the central office level, where in the past, each school was kind of operating under their own domain, and deciding what they would like to do, and make those requests. But people were doing different things, and it was costing money. And let's, Amy decided, let's look at this across the board, and say, hey, I can get a better deal by sending, you know, more people and participating, you know, more groups, and getting a better bang for a buck. So some savings there. We've moved to natural gas. All of our buildings now, other than Nyanic Center, Nyanic Center is still on oil, as the gas line hasn't made it all the way down yet. Maybe hopefully someday it will. Our regional efforts, you know, sharing of some transportation was through special education, staff programs. I'll talk about one in a minute, that we are currently doing with Waterford, that's saving us some money. And town services too. We, although we had a fairly quiet year with snow this year, we worked very well on the storms that we did have with the town, where we're sharing some plowing services. We were able to get rid of a contracted vendor that we had, that was costing us roughly $20,000. And we work with the town now, sharing, you know, some, we're doing this small parking lot for you, you're doing this for us. It saved us, saved us that money. So just over the last four years, an estimated of, you know, almost $400,000 in savings, which we're proud of. So when we look at, you know, at staffing, these are some of the reductions that, you know, we've been able to make. And what's most important to me as a superintendent, and I think our Board of Education, is, you know, we're not, we're not working, we're not losing people. We're looking at positions through attrition, so when people retire, and through redistricting. So, you know, we're not saying, look up here, you count, you know, 11 positions, well, it doesn't mean that, you know, 11 people are losing their job. That's not what's happening. So through redistricting, shuffling and moving staff around, Flanders School is dropping, 70 to 80 students. Nyanic Center is growing. So we have to shuffle staff. So when you kind of throw it all up in the air, and put it down on paper, we were able to reduce three elementary certified teaching positions, and still keep the same in class sizes, which is important to us, and one of the most important things to our Board of Education. So that's the three positions right there. On the same lines, three paraprofessional positions as well, under that same assumption. Enrollment fluctuations, I'll get into some enrollment slides in a minute, as I mentioned. But as we follow the trends of enrollment, we're starting to see an increase at the elementary level, but the middle school and high school are still dipping some. Well, you can see, we're true to that. We understand that, and we've had a reduction of one teacher at middle school, and three positions. I shouldn't say teacher, I should say positions, three positions at the high school. And there's some retirements in there, so, you know, we're just eliminating the position. And then administratively, you know, we've heard in the past, that, you know, and it happens in most every district, you know, you're top-heavy on administration. We don't feel we're top-heavy. We feel we're very aligned with what we have for our administrative structure. But we did do some work and reduce our Director of Technology position, and are doing more of a team approach, under the direction of our Assistant Superintendent. And there's a lot of work to do in that area, much more than we thought. So we're going to talk a little bit about that in a minute. But a total savings in the staffing world, with those 11 positions of, you know, $613,552, with minimal impact on students, which is what's most important. So some additional cost-saving measures on Slide 10. One big one for next year we're focused on, which we feel is very good for students, is our current off-site program. We've got about 23 high school students in our Coastal Connections Program, project-based program, meeting the needs of students who really need kind of a smaller setting. And we're moving that. We rent a space in town right now, for $30,000 a year. We're reconfiguring central office and moving ourselves around to fit that program in the middle floor of central office. Going to save us $30,000 next year, as well as, you know, utilities. So we think that's a good thing. And also, our Coastal Connections students can now walk between the high school, who's been transporting them. Sometimes they'll take one class at the high school, they might use our field for sports, for PE. So now they can walk, which is a savings for transportation. You mentioned last year about busing. That came up quite a bit. We heard you. We reduced two school buses for next year, savings $100,000. So that's, where redistricting helped with that. But our Student Services Department, and some of our staff at central office, really worked diligently, looking at, you know, all the runs, and making some more consolidated efforts, making sure we're not increasing runtimes. But we're able to reduce two buses for next year. I mentioned the copy services contract, brought in all new machines this year. It's going to save us $9,000 next year. So we're getting not only new machines, better quality, but we were able to reconfigure a new five-year deal, and save $9,000 for next year. I mentioned that alternative program, those that earlier, we're working with Waterford Public Schools. Right now, by law, you're mandated, when you expel a student, to no longer just provide 10 hours of tutoring a week. You now have to provide the full 900 hours over the course of, you know, a school year. So that's really a full school day you have to provide every day. That's a lot of money. Waterford had just started a small program, where they're using one of their teachers to fill, because they had a couple students that, you know, were expelled. We had one, we collaborated with them. We're now sending that student to Waterford for that program. And then all we're paying is the per pupil cost, prorated over the course of the rest of this year. So that's a savings, because we would have to be paying the salary of a teacher to run that program, but we're only paying Waterford the per pupil cost. So there's some of the ideas that we're trying to work more on, and grow a program of that nature with area towns. So that's been very, very helpful. Future cost avoidance measures as well. I mentioned the Waterford program. You know, the elementary schools, and through the renovation process, there has got to be some savings that come forth with new windows in our buildings. You look at Nyanic Center, and it's great to drive by and see the new windows that are in half the building now. When we finish that building, there is going to be such efficiencies, I think. So Mariana and I really are anticipating some savings as we move through next year. And we won't know until the end of next year, which we'll have some good data, then, you know, we talk about the 2021 budget, we'd be able to kind of do apples-to-apples comparison. So let's talk about enrollment for a minute. So when you look at, and we put it all in there, our total pre-K to 13, you know, student enrollment, so includes preschool, it includes our transition, our 18- and 21-year-old program. We went back to 2013, and did an analysis, and this was all through Malone and McBroom's study, an outside contracted service that we really needed to use, and was most effective with our whole redistricting process. So you can see, the trend is, and hence why we pushed to keep three elementary schools, was our overall numbers are projected to go up. And this is, you know, when you look out to 2027, which is not all that far away, you know, seven, eight years, eight years away, that's the high end. We could be upwards of 3,200 students, and well over 3,000 students. We're currently sitting, as you can see, in 1819, right around just under 2,700 currently. So if you go forward one more slide, I'm going to give you some breakdowns of where the elementary, the middle, and the high school are currently at. So if you take a look at the elementary, I mentioned the elementary is starting to climb. We're seeing kind of a boom in our preschool numbers. Hence, we're asking for a little bit of assistance for a staff member, a certified occupational therapy assistant down there, because our numbers are growing. So elementary-wise, the 2018-19 school year is kind of almost the plateau. You've got three different scenarios there, of what Malone and McBroom projected to do out until 2027-28. So at the elementary, three schools, you could have upwards of 1,151 students across the three buildings, or around 1,000, at the low end, just over 1,000. You know, currently, we're sitting, as you can see, about 840, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, 856, right around that. 850 is a good number to look at. So our elementary population is about to, if these projections are right, and, you know, they've done a very good job across the state, they're highly respected, to start to climb. At the middle school level, on the next slide, we've got another few years of some declining enrollment. Currently, that building is sitting, it's just over 800 students. And it's going to drop down, projected by 2020, 2021, '22 to 752. But then it starts to climb, and projected to be somewhere between, out at 2027-28, between 942 and 848. So I mentioned earlier, we reduced a staff member at that, at the middle school for next year. And part of that is, that wave is finally getting through the elementary, where we've got a smaller fourth grade class coming up to fifth grade. We don't need, you know, the total number of teachers at the fifth grade level. Our middle school is five through eight. So we're able to reduce there. And then you'll see at the high school level, why, you know, we're looking at a reduction of three, three staff members, where they're on a trend to go down as well, but for a longer duration, taking them out to roughly 2024-25, before they start to climb. Ending up in 2027-28, somewhere between, you know, 1,000, almost 1,100, 988. And that's including Salem as well. So we'll see where Salem's population goes to, but we've got some higher Salem numbers coming in next year, which is helping with some tuition dollars. So there's some enrollment projections, each of the three levels, as well as an overall district number. Happy to go back.
Is this the same organization that gave you the enrollment projections when you came and presented the grade school projects?
Yeah, there was two. Back in the early, we were using NSDAQ. That was different. We switched over to Malone and McBroom. And for the redistricting process, and some of the, some of the school projects, we used Malone and McBroom. But mostly, they were for redistricting. So timeline-wise, I'm not quite sure where you're at, but NSDAQ didn't give us the data that we were looking for. Hence, we went with Malone and McBroom, who's done this.
The justification referendum.
Was it? Malone and McBroom for the referendum? Yes, okay. So, timing-wise, then, yes.
So these numbers are consistent with those numbers?
Yeah.
Same database?
Yes. Yep. You had reached out and asked about, on our next slide, Slide 15, about some of the per pupil expenditure numbers. So we broke that down for you. And you asked about a five-year look back. We, back in 2013-14, we put it up against the state average, and our DURG, we're in DURG, District Reference Group D. 13-14, we were at, you know, $14,989 per pupil, jumping down to 17-18, $16,487. Remember, we're always a year behind with this information. But, you know, looking at it against, you know, the state average, we're lower than the state average, we're lower than our DURG. Percent-wise, increase over five years was almost $1,500 for us, $1,800 for the state, and 19, over 1,900 for the DURG. So we had a 10% increase, 12% state, 13% DURG. And I think what's most important, if you look at that 17-18, you can look at all of them, the ranks, but out of 169 towns, you know, East Lime is ranked 109, 109. So there's 108 other districts out there that are, have a higher per pupil expenditure, you know, than we do. And we're one of the highest-performing districts, I'd say, you know, in the state. When we talk District Reference Group D, we really equate ourselves to those schools and districts that are in, you know, B, and sometimes A, when you look at our standard scores and our numbers.
Can you briefly explain how you, what the calculation is behind the number? Because when I do a calculation, I'm getting something slightly different. I'm getting about $1,000 higher per pupil. So the math.
So the state, that comes from our end of this school year at work, it's calculated by the state of Connecticut, but they exclude certain items, like transportation costs are excluded.
Mike.
Mariana, can you pause a moment? We need to give you a mic, I'm sorry.
So, so just so I'm following, for 17-18, the per cost per pupil, $16,487. That's a state?
Correct.
That's a state-generated number?
Correct.
And it excludes, I'm sorry, if you could just?
Yeah, and it excludes some items, such as some transportation costs are excluded from the calculation, and some specialized costs are excluded from the calculation. The state typically publishes this, and I can certainly share with you the website. It's a list of all the towns and their per pupil costs, after we file what's now called the Educational Financial System Report. So that's why you don't have 18-19 yet, we're not done. Once the year is over, and I file that report, they begin calculating that.
Okay. And when you report these enrollment numbers to us, is that as of June 30th of that fiscal year, or is that of December 31st? Is it midpoint?
We use October 1. If you go back to Slide.
October 1, okay.
Slide, yeah, Slide 11, that's the October 1 count. That's when we add the final reporting to the state as to where our numbers are.
And that's for the upcoming year, to, to complete the current year?
For the current, yes, for the current, the current year, that's the final report.
Oh, there it is. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So as we move to Slide 16, I just, I want to, I want to thank Linda Johansson for some of her words as it pertains to, you know, this, this really was a tough budget, because it was not, we had high hopes of, of getting in some, some new initiatives that align with our, you know, our long-range plan, and it, it just, it didn't happen. It didn't happen because of, you know, these five areas, which I just want to go through. So it was, it was a bit disheartening in many ways, and we have been, we have been flat in trying to move forward, but it's extremely difficult to move a long-range plan forward and, and, and grow, you know, a district in a direction that, you know, we have a vision for, when you're hit with, with associated costs that many are out of your, out of your control. So let's start with security and safety, if we may, on Slide 17. We, I'll kind of just put this out, that we, we have a need for additional safety and security staff members. We're in a world of bad need, and, you know, I think there's some districts that are behind us, some districts have reached out to look at our model, Montville being one of them, some other ones. But we need to increase a few of our security staff. Coastal Connections coming over to the Central Office Building, you know, we have students in that building, we, we need a, a security member there that would work in conjunction with Flanders School, because Flanders is attached, you know, to, to our Central Office Building. The middle school, we only have one safety and security member at the, campus security member at the middle school currently. The high school has three. High school is just over 1,000 students, our middle school's at 800. We're feeling there's, there's a real need there and, and absence at times, especially when the school security staff member gets up from his desk at the front and goes to somewhere else in the building, or is dealing with an issue. It's relied on the office and some visibility, a little bit of visibility issue there, too. We like that person to be front and center. So additionally, we have paid, when we switched over two years ago, from just having greeters at the elementary and middle school level, to actually, you know, campus safety and security staff members who were focused on just that and have some sort of a background in, you know, either law enforcement or, you know, work in the judicial system of some sort. We started off paying them at, you know, a rate that we felt was appropriate, it was new. But we're finding districts, Old Lime, for instance, is paying their individuals modeling, you know, what we do, paying $26 an hour. We're not paying that right now. So we've got to start to, to climb so we keep our people. We already lost one who, who actually went to Old Lime, because it's a higher pay. So we've got to stay in the market. So there's an increase there with our safety and security of 116,557. District technology. Technology has been quite a major challenge for us this year and will be next year. Bottom line, there is an awful lot of work that, I'll just, awful lot of work that we've had to do to our, our network and our backbone and our wireless, you know, connectivity. High school was one of our major problems, and we did some work to, to work to get that rectified, which is still in process. But, you know, you've got kids that are coming in, or if you take a classroom, for instance, you've got students that have a device, they have a phone, we're rolling in laptop carts, so every student might be on a device. You could have anywheres from, you know, 24 devices, phones that are hooking to the internet, all hooking to wireless, wireless into connectivity spot, and it doesn't work. So we've done a lot of work to upgrade and fix that, we've got a lot more work to do. A lot of that work occurs over the summer, and we have not had a contract or a vendor helping us during those summer months. So this money helps offset and gives us some support during the summer, where most of the work needs to done, needs to get done, because we have to shut down our systems to be able to upgrade and fix them and then move forward. You can't necessarily do that during the course of the school day, when people are working.
Is your slide right then, Jeff? It says no technology project upgrades are worked from July 1st to August 31st?
Exactly, so we haven't had that in the summer. Exactly. We, what we want and what we need is to bring in support over the summer.
Oh, okay.
Exactly, that's, that's what we need. That's, that's what this cost is associated with, 100, not the next slide, 115,000. And just to reference, when you look at, you know, a town over from us, Waterford, roughly the same size, a few less students than, than we have, but, you know, our technology budget, all-in, staffing, contracted service, you know, we help out with our, our network and our engineers, 809,000, where Waterford's technology budget, its current year was almost a million dollars. So, not to compare apples to apples, but we've got some work to do and, and it costs a few dollars to, to help build that support. We can't move our classrooms, our teachers are chomping at the bit to move forward with, with great technology and integration of technology, but when things don't work, we have a problem. So we're working very hard to, to get those things fixed, and one of those is 115,000 to do a lot of work over the summer. Special education costs, always an, an area that a lot of, is, you know, really is out of our control with associated costs. We're losing excess cost dollars, so we're looking at about 100, about $205,000 less in excess cost dollars, bringing us from what was over 600,000 down into the high 3 to, to low 4 range to support students that are, that are outplaced. You get a percentage back, you know, from the state. So that number is decreasing from the state. We do have some unanticipated, a few students that we have found that we need to outplace to other, other sites, other schools. Those costs are anywhere from, you know, $80,000 to $100,000 for a program, and then throw in transportation to that site daily, could be anywheres from 30 to 50,000, depending on where it's going. So tuition costs, 168,783 with transportation as well. I mentioned earlier, preschool was expanding some, so we were in the need of a Certified Occupational Therapy Assistant, cost of $50,000 to bring in support some students that have special education needs, our three-year-olds mandated by law to begin to provide services to three-year-old students who require them. We bring them into our preschool program and we provide those services. So there's a cost there. So that's our issue. Some of our solution, as you can see, is to fund those areas, the unanticipated special education outlay costs, we need to fund those, we, no choice. Hire the 1.0 FTE COTA. And then obviously, we're continuing our regional and regionalism efforts to share when it comes to transportation services, you know, to cut a cost in half. So if, I'll use Waterford again, if Waterford's got a child that's, they're outplacing in, you know, somewhere up north, northern Connecticut, and we are, we try and share that ride, so we're both splitting the cost of daily transportation. But when you pull all that together, 423,783 for additional special education costs. Special education is, it's a tough area. The prevalence rate is going up across the state, the state average now is about 15%. Our district, we're sitting at about 13% of the prevalence rate. So out of, you know, 2,700 kids, we've got roughly 420 special education students that we need to provide services for. So many in-house, most in-house, but there's a handful that are out as well.
Jeff, on that note, the Occupational Therapy Assistant estimate for $50,000, that includes benefits?
Mariana, does that include benefits? No, right? No, okay.
Just Salem.
What's, what's the cost with benefits?
Depending on the type of insurance that they select, that's roughly $20,000.
Sorry, the cost of insurance, the average cost, again, not knowing whether the person's going to take single, two-person, or family, would be roughly $20,000. And then, really just a mind, depending on, there's no, they would be part of TRB, because they're certified, so we don't have a cost for that, and a small percentage for Medicare.
Mariana, don't we, don't we contract with them, so we don't offer benefits? Or, you know, we have some.
Well, because it's important, when you put the cost on here, to know if it's the total package or just the dollar.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, that's a good question.
$50,000 buys you nothing these days.
Actually, if, if we're, if we're not part of the union, then correct. We would, the cost would be the $50,000, and then depending on the affordability calculation, we wouldn't, it wouldn't be the same insurance coverage that we would offer someone that's in an affiliated group.
All right, so I don't want to sound blonde here.
No, that's okay.
Is it, what's the bottom line? Do we know yet or not know?
It's a potential cost.
So we don't know?
Don't know, yeah, yeah.
Open item.
On, and it's, in average, we might be able to, you know, what we didn't do was go for a full occupational therapy individual with an occupational therapy certification, we're going with a, a COTA Occupational Therapy Assistant, which is a lesser cost, but is still giving us a quality individual that's going to support the needs of students.
I just want to understand.
Yeah.
Apologies to blondes, I didn't mean to insult anybody.
I'm still a little blonde, other than the gray, but.
No, you're.
So just one note, yeah, that's, so that's pretty much it on the special education costs. And, look, we, we need to do quality work when it comes to special education services, because we all know what can happen when you don't. You know, you end up with lawsuits, you end up with high costs that, you know, can happen. And we don't want that to happen. And it has happened in the past, so we're doing a lot of due diligence in this world to make sure that we're crossing Ts and dotting Is. Certified staff retirements, this is kind of a, a one-hit fix, which we have had a problem with. It's been done a certain way for, you know, many, many years. It's not the appropriate way to budget. When you talk about retirement payouts for, for sick leave, we've always kind of utilized end-of-the-year money to help offset the costs, you know, for the following fiscal year. It's not the way to budget. So we need to fix that by rectifying it, discontinuing that practice, budgeting for it, and paying for it in the appropriate year. So that's, that's a one-hit fix of $146,000. And just a note, you can see that, that was a, he said it was grandfathered in back in 2013 as well. You know, we don't, we don't offer those benefits anymore for sick leave payouts after 2013. Next area is health insurance, and this is the last, last of the five areas. We all know that we're rolling over and moving to the state partnership plan, the 2.0 plan. We're going from a high deductible health plan to, back to really a traditional PPO plan, where you pay a copay of, you know, $15 when you go to receive, you know, medical services at the doctors. We're going to save money moving to that plan, obviously, and what it does is it, it gives us some equilibrium with, you know, each year with us, you know, we know what a general increase is going to be versus, you know, going from, you know, what we went this year up to a 28% increase, which was astronomical, four years ago was a 4% increase. You just can't budget for those things. It's, it's insane, and hence we're in a freeze right now. But we'll be able to have a streamlined insurance plan, you know, for at least the next three years. But with that comes unanticipated costs. We feel that there's going to be a number of people, and I'll kind of speak to our, our paraprofessionals that are going to come back onto this plan. We have 112 paraprofessionals across our district that work with students. We only have, was it nine right now, Mariana, that take the high deductible health plan? Well, they've got a, a 5,000, $10,000 deductible with that, 5,000 single, 10,000 family. You're going to eliminate that now, so they're not paying the first 5,000 or the first 10,000. You're going back to a traditional PPO plan. I feel a number of people are going to want to come back onto our insurance plan. Number, number of them jumped off it when we moved away from, or when we moved to the high deductible health plan, because, you know, they felt it wasn't, you know, fiscally feasible for them. So we anticipate a number of people that are going to come back to the plan, which is going to cost us some money. So that's why you see an increase of 363,182, mainly because of that anticipated, anticipated increase in health insurance.
So how much did going to 2.0 save versus what we're going to lose by more people participating?
Can we figure out that? I don't have that number off the top of my head, but we might need to get back to you on that exact number.
Because that's important, right? I mean, is it a wash, or are we gaining overall?
Well, I think.
And when I say gaining, I mean saving overall.
Yeah, I think as you project out, or you look out over the next couple of years, I think it's going to be a savings, but, you know, for us, there's, there's an increase, but.
The, the total that I'm anticipating that's budgeted is 740,000 for people that are going to come back onto the plan, because there's also teachers that, there's approximately 70 teachers that have declined coverage. They don't get a waiver for that, so depending on the, the, where they are now, they could potentially come back to our plan.
Okay. So I still don't feel like my question was answered.
But there's.
Yeah, just wondering, what's the, what's the savings, I guess, over the course of the, you know, of the year?
So I guess, if, if we didn't have these people coming back to the plan, I'm including...
But we do.
So, right, but we do, so there's.
Yeah, we're anticipating. We don't know the exact number. We're anticipating, but we don't.
Right, I'm just going along with your assumption of 363. I'm just saying, if, if we're going to cost more, it's going to cost more in this amount, how much are we saving by moving to 2.0?
I think you'd have to.
We're not saving money by moving to 2.0 for us.
Yeah, there's a combination town and, and Board of Ed, too. Look at an overall number, it's something we can obviously work on and pull together.
So what, so you're not saving 380,000? Because I think I heard you say you're anticipating a number of individuals to come back onto the traditional plan.
Correct.
Which would, you anticipate would cost 740,000.
Which is included in that 363.
Right. So if you, if you didn't have this additional cost, right?
Correct, that's what I, I'm sorry, that's what I thought she was asking me. So if we didn't have that additional cost of the people coming back to the plan, we would be saving.
380,000?
Correct.
The, the?
Correct, the difference, yeah.
But my question is, when you change this plan, it's going to be as of January 1st, 2020?
July 1st.
No, July 1.
July 1st?
July 1, yeah. We run July 1 to June.